This time I go ahead and call this meeting to order. Unfortunately, but we'll get started like everybody's standing. We're gonna have a work prayer. Tyler, do you want to lead us in the work prayer this morning?
I can. Our Father, with this another day of life, thank you for your strength and help. Thank you for each and every blessing you give us from least to the greatest. Thank you, Lord, that you began this morning to do the county business. We ask you to bless all of our leaders, bless all of our fellow men, as we call them halfway. Help the Father go with us, be with us, and help us direct our minds and you order our steps. Whatever we accomplish, whatever fails without you, heads and hearts may be our first and glory to all the county. Lord, we ask you, thank you for the break, be here today. As you, Lord, always speak, and we respect you, the one and the other, and unto you, the which this day in the name of your life, whatever you now be playing for, so long we pray, we will be gone in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the middle, liberty, and justice for all. Okay, first order of business, consideration approval of emergency budget amendment number twenty twenty-two, dash B A, dash double oh three. When we go through it, if we come up on something we got a question or something about, it's not the way to leave you here. Take me back. Okay, consideration approval of emergency budget amendment number twenty twenty-two, dash B A, dash double oh three, receiving two hundred sixty-three thousand forty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents into the road fund. Road fund for FEMA project appropriating the same amount to road maintenance contract. Do we have a reading?
Emotion.
Emotion.
And I'm saying. One second, emotion. Donnie Bush?
No.
Ray Opey?
Ah.
Any more?
No.
Bill Chinkerson?
No.
Okay, he has something up for discussion, what would be, uh, who would do the transfer into the road department? Something on the budget transfer? Hills?
You paying the road maintenance contractors?
What now?
Is that part of it? Paying the contractors, then what part of this is for?
This is reimbursement for what's already been done.
That's what I'm saying.
On the contractor work, yeah.
For the contractor, right.
Yes, it's already been done, the contractor who did the FEMA project, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
This money is money coming in from a FEMA project, um, pretty much what?
Coming, though.
Yeah, coming from FEMA.
What we're paying for with it?
Oh, that's a, that's a two on number four. Um, this will just put it into the appropriation. The first part is put it into the appropriation, and then two and three, or three and four will be moving where it needs to go and spend. So, you know, that's what two's doing, is just saying, everybody, we received two hundred sixty-three thousand dollars, we didn't know we were gonna get it, or didn't know when we were gonna get it, it's FEMA.
When.
When we're gonna get it, but it's FEMA, and now that it's here, we have to amend it in, to spend it, but it's.
That's the way it always is, when we want to get a project done, we have, we have to pay for the FEMA projects up front, and then when FEMA signed off, says, yeah, this is a little again, it's been taken care of, then they send us the money, and then we take that money and put it in, in the road fund.
Back down to the, pretty much the agenda, number two, puts it into the pool so that we could pay with it. Three, moves it around to where you're gonna pay with it, and then four is actually cutting the chance. So, it's a three-step process.
The project that wasn't done in twenty twenty, I think.
Can't remember the FEMA number.
I was like, there's, there's awfully certain criteria you have to meet to, to make an emergency budget amendment that I can have.
No.
As long as the D O G's recommendation on day, as long as we thought we could back it up, which is there anything, anytime emergency, uh, as long as we think we have enough paperwork to back it up, we can do it.
Well, I'm saying there's certain criteria that you meet, like, for example, uh, that's usually like for a disaster, or, uh, flood, or a tornado, or whatever, the way I understand the statute from that.
No, emergency budget amendment is if, that we need to take what money we've got, and we're putting it in our account, we're gonna pretty much pay the bill. It's already, it's already on the desk to be sent.
How's the emergency budget amendment?
Yeah.
Why is it called it?
Because we need to do it ASAP instead of waiting on them to go through, you said they had a lot of, uh, a lot of budgets that are remaining right now, and didn't know when the factory they'd get to it.
So you, you've exhausted all the line hours, that's your mercy. You spent all the line hours in the budget.
Well, yeah, we need to put money in the, money in the camp. So, well, I'm asking, what are your question about doing the emergency budget amendment, putting it in the road funds with their bills? Have you got a question on that?
Yeah, number one, the contracts you're trying to pay are filed illegally.
What now?
Contracts you're trying to pay, all this budget amendment, were hard illegally, according to the.
They're thinking I'm never gonna be paying any bill, this is taking the money that's been appropriated for us.
Transfer, you gonna pay bills with it, what's the use? We're mixing.
Can you explain that to him, Brandon and I, I don't think, I don't think I'm doing a good job at all. On number two, we called. Well, we called Robert Brown Friday, uh, and we have two hundred sixty-three thousand forty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents sent in for, for approval to go ahead and put back in our road fund. They've got so many, uh, budgets they're dealing with, he just told us to go ahead and do an emergency budget amendment. He went and put it in there and sent him a copy of the minutes that we had to have that money.
You have to have that to receive.
No, we just had to go on and receive it.
No, we received the money, but we're asking, is, uh, but, but, that budget amendment is putting the appropriations in, so we have to spend the money. What the budget amendment's for.
Any kind of.
It's mandatory, I guess. It's an emergency budget amendment. Statute, the way I understand it, that, that's set up for emergency flood, uh.
In order to do an emergency budget amendment, do we do, do we do that on hearsay? Because Robert Brown tells us to do it if we wanna do it? Is that a good question?
If you guys go and vote, none of that you can, if you don't, then you can require vote, and it's up for you guys to take an individual vote, if you feel that you need to, more information, and require more information.
And what would the statute be on emergency budget amendment?
Oh, here it is, oh, here it is.
You have no idea?
Look it up.
Oh, here it is.
Then we need to look it up.
Oh, here it is.
Look it up.
Got it right here. Pursuant to K R S sixty-eight two eight, any amendments to a county budget submitted to the late local finance office on an emergency basis must strictly adhere to the provisions of six seven oh eight oh seven eight. A full copy of a fiscal court order, naming and describing the emergency must accompany, accompany the budget amendment. That's right off the D O G website.
Bottom line is, we've got bills to pay, we've got money to pay, if you're doing a transfer.
Or orders.
That's what's the name of it.
You must miss fiscal order.
That's what's the name of it. And, uh, by hand, when we go here, that's the budget amendment, um, pause, the order is just saying where you're gonna move funds from. I did, I did not type up the reason behind it, uh, because I mean, it's not explained, or it's just that we have deals approaching the end of their thirty-day cycle.
Really, number two is no big deal to me?
It's, two is.
Go ahead and get the money.
Two is put the money in there, three, yeah, three is moving it around, and then four is there to cut the chance.
Three and four is, is the, is the problem here, it's not number two.
Well, let's back up and vote on them two then.
Okay.
Consideration approval of emergency budget amendment twenty twenty-two, B A, dash double oh three, receiving two hundred sixty-three thousand forty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents into the road fund for FEMA projects and appropriating the same amount to road maintenance contract. Emotion.
Emotion.
Give them a second. One second, Dan. Ray Opey?
Ah.
Any more?
Ah.
Bill Chinkerson?
Ah.
Donnie Bush?
Ah.
John Chinkerson? Consideration approval budget transfer eleven dash double oh one. Yeah, motion.
Emotion.
Give them a second. One second, emotion. Ray Opey?
No.
Bill Chinkerson?
No.
Donnie Bush?
No.
Ray Opey?
Ah.
I moved out. Okay, uh, what's wrong with doing a budget transfer? You've got twenty-four, I think it's twenty-four bills that you all approved payment for in a regular monthly meeting, the money wasn't there to do, did that wrap that?
Yeah.
None of the bills were paid to do with anything with the road department. And there was something, maybe something there.
Do you got, do you have a bill?
Charlie.
It's in your package, you don't.
Not, he wants it.
Oh.
Oh, it'll be excellent.
You have that standard, yes.
In there, what was that?
It's right here. Um, you got senior citizens, pay road stuff, uh, water treatment at the judicial center, elevator maintenance at the judicial center. Water maintenance at judicial center. More water prepared at judicial center, and airways for tractor supply. On the road, you have Blackfield's airways, Bethel's Farm, Troy's Drums, Connor's Trucking.
All the home tractors.
Yeah, there are a few other ones in there too, like, uh, eight, thirty, it's all right.
Little ones, no problem, I don't have a problem with little ones.
Well, we did have money, we did have money to cover, but we all done a budget transfer.
Pinkle, Gibson, Kent, and Kilbricht, and Reagan, and that's all, and, so, but, it's basically contractors, and one other one in, in road. In jail, you have, they bought some gloves and stuff, like, needle protective gloves, all the dogs, free call, reimbursement. Barnes, Plum, uh, this is.
You all, you all bring a hand to pay?
This one.
Don't, don't go ahead and make a copy of that, and then Mark want to choose not to pay.
We only have five more. Barnes, T, Plum, and that's a moment, Dicky Marge, John Stone, Business Medical, and Walker Services.
There were twenty-four.
Was that one on the side?
Them two.
Brendan Wolf family.
Yeah, that's the ones when they moved the patients way back to flood, back in, whatever, which they were large. And they didn't bill it quick enough for us to turn in FEMA, and now they would pay for it, so.
Does that cover everything back?
Yeah.
Is that the same one you submitted, we got a copy of here, eleven?
That's the transfer, yeah, you got the transfer in front of you, this is the vendor's claim.
Okay. Well, that's what we're voting, right?
And they all already pay all the vendors' claims on, on everything, but they want enough money in there to do it with.
But that's transfers.
So, did we, we discussed like speaking about everything except, except, uh, begin with all two, transition to the road.
Yeah, but they want enough money to, but they don't want to cut them off.
The transfer, try to make a amendment to that, uh, budget transfer, life speaking, and excluding, anything that start with all two, and approval, everything else.
You can do that, yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, so you're, you're making motion, just go ahead and pay the twenty-some odd bills that we didn't have money to cover with that old one, right?
Nope, nope.
It's an approval of budget transfer, omitting anything that has to do in front. So, anything road related.
Excluding, excluding anything road.
Any road, so they'll one, or three, or four.
Right. Make that motion. Say, and, and, and the, uh.
Thirteen.
The annual services.
That'd be helpful.
That's an old one. Watch County, Els County. What's the figures on that? You had that on it, was Watch County?
Here, here, what I suggest is still on the annual service, it, it's just like, uh, hospital bill, when we get over, get, get a, somebody runs a hospital bill up, after so long, we left to a settlement, and all they be paying is what Medicare will pay. These bills here that we've got is actually uncalled for, they should have been submitted months and months ago, uh, when flood came. I think we need to go, need to negotiate with Brendan Wolf and watching Kane, and what, uh, Medicare will pay, and us pay them that amount. You know, like, sometimes you'll get a hospital bill for eighty thousand dollars, they'll, they'll, they'll revise it and say, well, uh, we'll take this much money and, and write it off.
Watch County currently Els County fiscal court, I say call forty thousand dollars, for now.
What's that?
For me to pay an agent here.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't pay, I wouldn't pay Watch County nothing until they pay the forty thousand dollars a day over. That's, that's me, you know, then.
That's gonna get.
I mean, we'll say that we have to kind of do something legally here, do we need to turn that over to county attorney, let him address that? What do you think, Brandon?
Well, I mean, I just like an offer, you guys figure out what you think each of those runs for, I mean, that would be my take on it, is if, if you wanted to negotiate with them, just gotta figure out what these.
I don't have no problem with paying them, eleven thousand or whatever they bill, if they'll pay us the four.
Or if they charge, that's the part they charge.
They don't have to negotiate nothing, just let them pay us what they want.
You try to contact them.
Anyone you want to make a determination?
I've made quite a few.
All we're gonna do is collect the bill.
That's what I think, do you, do you want to put that in motion to allow Brandon to get with, watch volunteer department on, on that?
Look back into this, uh, tie it into number four, the various claims.
Well, I thought it was on the budget transfer.
You have a. B A, did you not ask what them two things was on the top on the budget transfer?
Yeah, that's just part of that, this, uh, this is part of the various claims.
Right.
Yeah. Well, no, that's, uh, actually, they've got a motion on the floor.
Say.
And a second, to vote to do the budget transfer.
Before we start voting, don't.
And start talking.
Question, why would you charge us on that?
Yes, I see.
We start talking about four before we get three votes, though.
Right.
So, okay, so, two and three, you can vote.
So, you want to do a transfer to go ahead and include these two amounts in the transfer, what I'm saying?
It's in there, so, and that, that's the thing, if you approve over it, you're just giving, you know, the lead weight's right up to them now, but if we negotiate lower, then I'm fine.
What we're saying is, we don't need to leave us on there, um, on this one here. Need to make the transfer, then we work a claim list, go down, relax, right, right?
Yeah, the way it's going, uh, it won't cause any problems if you just do what you just said, I read them up, and I explained it once.
Not including this, don't need to include it or anything.
I made a motion to exclude each claim.
Donnie Bush, you made a motion, Ray Opey, second, Ray Moore?
Ah.
Bill Chinkerson?
Ah.
Donnie Bush?
Ah.
Ray Opey? You say that? Okay, consideration approval of payment of legal vendor's claims.
Okay.
Give them a motion.
Motion.
Give them a second.
Brittany, could you make a determination on the legal galleon of said contractors on this claim list?
Can I make one now?
I was asking, I'm talking to Brandon, where it says in the administrative code, chapter seven.
I can tell you.
There's these illegal contracts where it's not pending.
I can tell you right now, for something that I've never seen, any contracts, because I've never seen it.
Correct.
Thank you, thank you, Donnie, thank you, Donnie.
Nor have they been authorized.
I know what you're asking, we could have said in the last meeting, and your point is, is that, that the administrative code says all contracts should be reviewed, reviewed by the county attorney, and that was a no.
And also approved by fiscal court, and neither has been, those two items has never been met with, uh, just for the only sale to hard contractors for bucks.
You know anything about it, if you sing in it?
Maybe, maybe we'll put the contract together.
Yeah, I know, contracts, um.
With all the, with all the.
Yeah, I wrote them up on the emergency decorations, so, so, I'm pretty sure I got them all. But, I guess my, my only question would be, and when did it, when or if the emergency decorations came on?
May twenty-first, twenty-two.
I wrote them up, yeah, I did, I had all the signed documents in there, all contracts.
Governor Lexington's instructions, May twenty-first, twenty-two, I'm sorry, March twenty-first, two thousand two.
So, here we've been paying vendor claim for how many months, and you just had a question with it?
I questioned life speaking, is this not now?
How many months have we been paying, we've been voting, paying?
I mean, I think he's authorized a court, been, never looked over at county attorney.
All of it, as far as I know.
But he's now, he's now forty-eight.
I mean, I ain't saying he's seen them, but I mean, you've all made a motion to pay the bill.
That's what the administrative code said, that's what county attorney said, he hadn't, he hadn't, he'd seen no contracts, nor have these been approved by fiscal court.
Under mercy to, to require him to give a few and show you the contract to, if we.
It'll be what we think, I want to, I mean, that's what the administrative code says, it's not supposed to be wrong. You know, where you send me, even if Matt threw them up, I looked it up for five seconds, you know, it said that they were fine, but, I mean, I can't say, I can't really say that I saw them, because I didn't know. Does that mean that there's a legal, legal problem with them, maybe not, but it does not apply with it, and it does not apply with the administrative code. Under the emergency, that's another real issue, I don't know if that's, if that weighs that requirement or not, but it gives, it does give the judge's ability to contract correctly during that time period to still, without going through the fiscal court to approve those, but you still have to approve the expenditure funds in that situation.
But, the question is, how long was an emergency declaration, I don't even know what the dates of contracts are, I've never, I've never seen, what's one saying?
They wrote up there, and it's very slow, uh, when it was acquired, back around that time, I can't even hear it, I'm out of my head, exactly. I remember it's all around the same timeframe, back there close together.
I know you're, you say one time seventeen days, but I do know.
Seven to ten.
What now?
Seven to ten. It's, uh.
I don't know where you got that, but I do know the governor declared a state emergency under COVID, it stayed open for about two years, so.
We've talked, Mr. Richard Ornstein, he says, a regular, uh, emergency in that situation, that's only, uh, to like get people out, can't get out of their house, or roads washed out, or whatever, seven, ten days, is just a usual timeframe, seven, ten days, not three months, four months.
Okay, Ray Opey made a motion to pay the vendor claim, if I second it, Ray Opey?
No.
Ray Moore?
No.
That was it, uh, you all agree the transfer?
You go ahead.
They, you approve the transfer of many all twos, so if you, um, just go ahead and, and say pay for vendor's claims, I still can't pay anything all two, but I'll need you all to say yes, so I can vote, and, so I can pay everything in a one, or three, or four.
What if we just do it this way, everything below?
Everything below, yeah, I still can't pay them, because they're the transfer forward.
What if we just do it this way?
Okay, well, you're, you're.
Yeah, we're voting right now, that's why I stopped.
Let's, let's go ahead and get this one out of the way, your motion been put on the floor to pay all legal vendor claim bills, Oakley made a motion, I second it. Uh, Oakley, A, Ray Moore second, Bill Chinkerson?
No.
Donnie Bush?
No.
Motion, yeah, I said no.
Okay.
Now I can't, you all did the transfer for a one, or three, or four, and thirteen, but now I can't pay those bills.
I want, I still want to back up and just elaborate on this all too, what's, what's the trouble with paying the road department bills, what, what, are you, are you an excuse? You don't want to pay the.
Well, like I said, for one thing, contractors are already illegal, according to administrative code.
According to what?
Administrative code.
Since, since we on the administrative code, let me, let me ask a question, is there a hangup? Can we change the administrative code and all over the system agreement, any time?
No.
June.
Judge, judge can bring something forward, but, uh.
That's what I'm asking, you, you can bring it up. You can bring it up yourself.
Judges can bring it up at any time.
Anytime, as long as we're all in agreement, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's put the drug policy in that you're, you're talking about, uh.
We can do it in this meeting, but we've done it at the.
We can do it in the next meeting, that's right, that's, that's all I want to do, since, uh, since I'm a drug dealer, be a good time for all of us to be in agreement and pass this, this drug policy that we've had laying there.
I'm all for that a hundred percent, next meeting I'll put it on the agenda. But let's get back, let's get back to these vendors' claims on, on the road department, all two.
And the one I'm talking about is the one that we've had, everybody's already looked over, not the one that you had.
Going to do the one that's Brandon.
No, we're not either, not, I, we won't go along with that.
Hey, that's nothing to do with this meeting here, but I'll bring it, I'll bring it.
I just want to ask a question.
This is something that shouldn't have been done three years ago, but I'll bring that up, but let's get back to, let's get back to the meeting here.
It's, it's, I'm going back to the, you doing it the way you want it to, that's the problem, that's the whole problem with the drug policy.
But there's a man who put it together, and he copied other counties, so.
No, he didn't, no, I don't know it.
Well, you tell him, don't tell me.
Well, we, well, we had a first reading.
No, that's not the one we had, we're, had nothing to do with one of Brandon's.
No, not, not the one you had.
Exactly.
Hey, hey, this, this has nothing to do with this meeting, I will bring, I will bring, I will bring your thing in the next meeting.
Just let us talk here.
We can't, we can't, not even.
You have a candidate to have a time.
Not in the special meeting, how many special meetings have you been in, Ellis, you know about that?
That's what I did with Paul, yeah.
Okay, let's, let's get these bills here paid, let's go back to, uh, the road department, let's, what, what's wrong with paying the road department, uh.
Well, get right back to the contract there, it's, uh, should be written agreements, address, should be workers comp, liability insurance, it's like the administrative code says, you can follow none of this, no.
Why have you, why have you been paying the bill?
You claim an emergency, you claim whatever, but you didn't go by statute. Written bill doesn't tell you that you, that you.
Okay, let's go ahead and, let's go ahead and reach this, and let, Brandon, have you got time to even reach, uh, research it?
Let's ask the question, uh, what's happening on the ten, ten sales there, what's happening on that, that's, I mean.
I have to start this recording in about twenty minutes.
What's happening on the ten, ten sales, anybody know anything about ten, ten sales, what's happening there?
Can, can you take time to look at it? Can you take time to look at it?
Sure. Now, what's the exact question we're looking at?
To see if the contractor, I guess, should go in, where it was done under emergency order to pay the.
I'm gonna have all, I'm gonna have all that information.
Yeah, I'll take that.
Let's go ahead and do a research.
It's in the paper, it's looking to look at, so, the, I think the administrative code says the county attorney to approve those, that's a form contract, correct?
Says every contract of the county shall be approved as a form and the legality by the county attorney.
So, what's gonna happen with that, is that's, that's gonna be, give these contractors to us, like you called and asked me about what they, what we have. I told him that if this court does not approve these, it will end up in certain court on each one of these, and that would be the defense of the county at this point, because the fact that they, it's, and it's a procedural, or just a, a form issue, so be interesting to see what the court does with, I don't want to put this out, you know, out there at this point, because it's pending litigation issues we can discuss in, in administrative, in executive session, but that's kind of my take. Yeah, yeah, where we go from here, if you guys approve. Y'all, and where we go from here, if you guys are gonna approve those as they are submitted, which I think is probably not the point.
Also, a statute says that fiscal court has the ability to regulate all of first, of counter, all. And this, and nothing was, was called through by Judge Jackson.
But yeah, so given that, I mean, I can give my opinion, I'd rather do that in executive session, so that it's not an issue that can be broadcast to everyone, I'll be happy to do that. But it's, uh, but, I just tend to want to, you guys are gonna do today, if you're not gonna vote approving these vendor's claims, then that's, I think, we just can go with that at this point, and I'll be happy to.
Already done, right?
Okay. Okay, so that's already been voted down, so we will go ahead and let you get your stuff together, is there, how many do you have?
Yeah, if you can, that just might be a, 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 a.
Okay. Next, and then the consideration approval of the first reading of the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three annual fiscal court budget.
Also, I think, concerning that there, Judge, according to statute sixty-eight two forty, you did the same thing last year. You were, you're about thirty-four days late, county judge, you have to submit, that's all budget, you ask for the receipts to the fiscal court by May first of each year. It's a little bit fast there.
All right, it's late, but here's the time to do it, consideration first reading of fiscal year, do we have a motion to approve?
We just gotta look, we just look at the appropriations receipts Friday.
Motion.
And then second. One second, motion? You on the catcher?
No.
Donnie Bush?
No.
Roy Opey?
Yeah.
Ray Moore?
No.
Um, but I also, oh, we look for discussion, what's the reason I'm not approving the first reading today?
We ain't say, you told me, you gotta try it, you gotta try it. But I had it May first submitted, that's why the law was written that way, so the fiscal court can have time to look it over, to have two reasons.
Okay, so you haven't looked it over, and what you're saying?
I know, I didn't say that, I said we just got it thirst, uh, Friday, so.
Mm-hmm. And it's late, so.
Yeah, it's late, it's about thirty-four days late.
So what's the reason for not going ahead and doing the reading today?
Cause we, we ain't fully looked it over, and then, we ain't had that.
Okay.
I said you're thirty-four days late, like you went last year.
When did we want to have it, Robert Brown said, it just said, have a second reading, but, uh.
You think we're getting tired, we're getting tired of being blamed, we're getting tired of being blamed, but you won't call it.
Don't call it on me, it's a lot of being on the Saturday.
Did you expect?
I'm asking you.
What?
I'm asking you.
Who?
When, when, when's a good time, when you gonna have time to look over it, so we can get this done?
I'd say about a week.
Next week?
Is this week?
We do, yeah.
You done, you done made that meeting, when, thirty, Friday?
Uh, well, I'll, I'll.
You got that outside of the paper?
Yeah, oh, you have to make your way to Thursday, that's what it is. We have this small, so, we went ahead, we've done the yearly did, sort of like the gravel ass, all that stuff, and the date I put on them was, uh, get it done as quick as possible, certainly, while we're in conference, we can all just speak.
Or, or direct, if I has approved the fiscal budget, it has to be approved by the fiscal court, it has to be sent to Frank, they ask to prove it, send it back. Then we looking at it over, we can't change, we can change the internals, we can't change the bottom line, the figures, if it has to go back to Frank, always got to be done by June thirtieth, or county services will seize, like you did last year, and you did the same thing last year.
That's what I'm asking you, so will Thursday be enough time for y'all to look on the budget, so that you first read it Thursday?
We, we just still do, we have time, um, but we didn't get this part done, the first reading done as soon as possible.
And I don't know why you don't want to do the first reading, cause you'd like any change you'd want to, to the second.
What Don is referring to is the bottom line digger, so, once we, once we agree on the first reading, send it to D O G, our bottom line, our max, this kind of stuff. We can change that internal, but we won't change, give more money to this county, or this, that, but that bottom line number's gotta stay the same.
All, at the first reading, all thing we can change is the internals of the budget, we can't change the, the figures, the appropriations or revenue.
Absolutely.
Right, so that's, we're, we're gonna change them.
I'm asking you again, will Thursday be good, enough time for y'all to look over it and do the first reading, or do a special reading?
Something you have down there, as long as we're good.
That'd be good enough time?
We'll work it out with Matt this week.
That's what I'm saying, we gonna have a special meeting Thursday, you want me to go in there and have a tip for, to do the first reading on it? Along with your.
We had it on there, and then, but, and, you know, it's, it's up, it's on there, we, I've, I've, there, already there, and just push back on that. So I'm saying, if we are ready, we can do it, if we're not ready, we can do it next year. But it's, just have it on there, so if we did talk about it, if we need it.
Okay. Motion during meeting.
Motion.
Motion. Okay.
Do it now. Who did make the motion, somebody made a motion? That's your, uh, Roy Opey made a motion.
Oh, I saw you, not a care.
Donnie Bush?
Uh.
Roy Opey?
Uh.
Ray Moore?
Uh.
Ellis Center?